For Monday, July the 12th. Would you please call the roll?
Davis, here.
Smedley.
Here.
Schroeder.
Here.
Plag.
Here.
Salee.
Pearson.
Here.
Bennett Johnson. Mr. Plag, we have a quorum.
Thank you. In light of the fact that the Board President and the Vice President are both absent for tonight's meeting, but a quorum of this body does exist, I would like to move that Janaye Pearson serve as the temporary Chair of the meeting for the evening.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that Janaye Pearson Chair of the meeting tonight. Roll call vote, please.
Davis.
Yes.
Smedley.
Yes.
Schroeder.
Yes.
Plag.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Five Is and zero Ns.
Will you please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pause for a moment of silence. Agenda item number six. Comments to the board by citizens registered to speak to the board?
We have none.
Comments to the board by board members?
Just follow the numbers, come out.
Dr. Simpson, Superintendent's report?
Thank you. Summer project update. One of the things that is on the list is a complete reconfiguration of the HVAC system at Guess, and it's finally underway. Bleacher installation in the high school north gym will be later this month along with installation of a scoreboard. We have plans for new scoreboards at softball as well as Jelzma Stadium. And later in the agenda, we'll open bids for work to air condition the Fogarty Gym. We're awaiting delivery of the unit to air condition the junior high gym. Due to some delays, we expect these projects to stretch into the fall, but don't anticipate any disruption of services that were already present. Meaning that areas that were not air conditioned may, we may start the year without air conditioning like we've had in the past. But we believe also that the areas that currently have air conditioning, we will be able to maintain that throughout the transition. And some of this is due to supply demands and difficulties in getting supplies that I know anyone that has any connection to the construction industry understands that there's some realities right now that we're faced with just like everyone else. We've got some good news. You may have read about this, and I think we talked about it in committees, but Guthrie Public Schools received a Councilor Core grant from the State Department of Education. The grant is in the amount of $158,000 annually for three years, for a total of $474,000. It will fund new school counselors or new contracted counseling services. And we have posted some jobs. One of the challenges with that right now is counselors are in a very high demand. We're not the only district that received these funds or identified the need for additional counselors. And so as we go through this, we're going to see if we can find people to be in-house counselors. If we hire those folks for these positions, that will be, they'll be put on a grant-based contract, which is a non-continuing contract with regard to teacher tenure. And so in the event that we cannot, then we will explore contracted counseling services to assist our students. And online enrollment began last Monday. We already have noticed many students enroll that were not with us last year. In fact, this morning, I pulled some numbers, and this was as of this morning, so about one week into online enrollment, we've had 733 students enroll district-wide. 132 of those were students that indicated in the enrollment process that they are new to the district, but they are not pre-K students. So all pre-K students technically would be new to the district unless they're repeating pre-K. And so of the 132, that was kindergarten, going into either kindergarten through 12th grade. And that works out to 18% of the students that have enrolled are new to the district this year. They may have been with us in the past, but were not with us last year. And if you remember, the percentage that we lost to, from enrollment last year as of October 1st was 25%, but that number went down as the year went on because of new enrolees. And so we're tracking, at least in the first week, about where I would hope that we would to regain the students that we lost over last year. That being said, we want to get our enrollment numbers up. And so in fact, as we were getting ready to begin the meeting, I received a remind that went out to all central parents, and that's where one of my children go, and just reminding parents, and I know that we're going to have all of the principals do that in whatever form or fashion, to remind the parents to begin the online enrollment process. And I know technology has been answering questions of parents that were having difficulties or had questions of how to do it, and they've been taking those phone calls. In fact, I was over there this morning and listened to some of it going on myself. And so appreciate all the work that Dee and his folks are doing to try and make that work. I have some good news. GHS Assistant Principal Brett Stone was elected to serve as the Regional Representative for the Oklahoma Association of Secondary School Principals. This is just another example of the respect our leadership team garners from their peers. I know Mr. LeGrand has served in multiple leadership roles at the state level as well. And so I think that just speaks boldly to the leadership team that we have. Very proud of them. And then the last item I have is a reminder to board members that the OSSBA COSA Conference is not far away. It's August 26th through the 29th. And if you wish to attend, encourage you to visit with Samantha soon so that she can get you registered. And that's my report.
Thank you, Dr. Simpson. Next item is the consent agenda. Are there any items to be pulled? If not, a motion is in order.
Madam President?
Oh, go ahead.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion's been made by Davis and seconded by Schroeder to approve the consent agenda. Roll call, please.
Davis.
Yes.
Smedley.
Yes.
Schroeder.
Yes.
Plag.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Five Is and zero Ns.
Motion carries. Now to the business agenda. Agenda would be 9A. Recommendation, consideration, and action to approve Ms. Carmen Walters as the authorized official for Guthrie Public Schools to sign any federal claims for reimbursement from the State Department of Education.
It's on page 151 of your packet. This is an annual item where we, and you'll see one in the next agenda item. These are both kind of similar. With federal claims and with special education, we authorize, delegate that authorization to staff members. Recommend approval.
Madam President, I move that we approve Agenda Item A.
Second.
Motion has been made by Plag and seconded by Smedley to approve Agenda Item 9A. Is there discussion? Singing none, roll call, please.
Davis.
Yes.
Smedley.
Yes.
Schroeder.
Yes.
Plag.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Five Is and zero Ns.
Motion carries. Agenda Item 9B. Recommendation, consideration, and action to approve Ms. Angie Young as the authorized official for Guthrie Public Schools to sign any special education reimbursement claims from the State Department of Education for Project 621, 623, 625, 641, and 642.
As I mentioned earlier, this is an annual item that we bring to the board. Recommend approval.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve Ms. Angie Young as the authorized official for GPS to sign any special education reimbursement claims from the State Department of Education for Project 621, 623, 625, 641, and 642.
Second.
Motion's been made by Smedley and seconded by Davis to approve Agenda Item 9B. Is there discussion? Roll call, please.
Davis.
Yes.
Smedley.
Yes.
Schroeder.
Yes.
Plag.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Five Is and zero Ns.
Motion carries. Recommendation, consideration, and action upon Activity Fund Handbook for 2021, 2022.
Pages 153 through 188 of your packet are the red line of this document that we bring to you for annual approval, and changes were minimal, and recommend approval.
I make a motion that we approve Activity Fund Handbook for 2021, 2022.
Second.
Motion's been made by Davis and seconded by Plag to approve 9C. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Davis.
Yes.
Smedley.
Yes.
Schroeder.
Yes.
Plag.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Five Is and zero Ns.
Motion carries. Recommendation, consideration, and action upon Guthrie Upper Elementary Student Handbook for 2021, 2022.
Pages 189 through 216 of your board packet are that handbook, and it's in a red line master as well. And again, with most of the handbooks and changes, the changes are minimal this year. Recommend approval as submitted.
Are the changes made by the principals?
It's a meeting with the principals, generally the, and then they bring that to, in this case, Mr. Ogilvy, and I don't know, Chris, you and Todd, generally there's collaboration with their assistant principals, and then in many cases, their counselors. Was that accurate? Okay.
Madam President, I'll make a motion to approve the Guthrie Upper Elementary Student Handbook for 2021, 2022.
Second.
Motion's made by Schroeder and seconded by Davis to approve 9D. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Davis.
Yes.
Smedley.
Yes.
Schroeder.
Yes.
Plag.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Five Is and zero Ns.
Motion carries. Recommendation, consideration, and action upon the Junior High Student Handbook for 2021, 2022.
Pages 217 through 254 of your board packet are the Junior High Student Handbook. And if there are any questions, Mr. Bramwell is here, and he will be glad to answer those.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Junior High School Student Handbook for 2021, 2022.
Second.
Motion's made by Smedley and seconded by Davis to approve 9E. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Davis.
Yes.
Smedley.
Yes.
Schroeder.
Yes.
Plag.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Five Is and zero Ns.
Motion carries. Recommendation, consideration, and action upon FAVOR Alternative School Student Handbook for 2021, 2022.
This is on pages 255 through 282 of your board packet. And I know that Mr. LeGrand works with Ms. Benson on formulating the changes that we're recommending here tonight for FAVOR. And he's here to answer any questions that you might have. Recommend approval.
Madam President, I move that we approve the changes made to the FAVOR Alternative School Student Handbook for 2021, 2022.
Second.
Motion's made by Plag and seconded by Schroeder to approve 9F. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Davis.
Yes.
Smedley.
Yes.
Schroeder.
Yes.
Plag.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Five Is and zero Ns.
Motion carries. Recommendation, consideration, and action upon the Guthrie High School Student Handbook for 2021, 2022.
This is on pages 283 through 314 of your board packet. And Chris, you might mention some of the things that I know were discussed about the secondary handbook. There were a couple of things that we, seems like we made a couple of minor changes on.
Probably the largest, the biggest thing we're adding this year is just more than one individual in bathroom stall, is we found that some of these students are going in the restroom, the baby in there. And because the stalls are personal, it's private, we said that there's going to be consequences. I know junior high day had already been enacting that policy that we had, and so we included that in the handbook this year. It's like basically ISS that they're caught, more than one person in a stall, in the restroom, and out of school suspension. So primarily, that's the biggest thing that we've added this year.
Like you added some other areas that are off limits around your campus.
Yeah, that's true. We've kind of opened, that's a good point, we had opened up the campus more for power hour. We found that we weren't really having a lot of problems, it's just a matter of staffing and providing supervision on some of those areas. And so we've kind of tightened that back up somehow, that the area that's off limits is any part outside of our sidewalks on both sides in the outback. So it'll be easier to supervise and provide supervision for those students during lunchtime.
A motion would be in order.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Guthrie High School, of course, Guthrie High School Student Handbook for 2021, 2022.
Second.
Motion's made by Smedley and seconded by Davis to approve 9G. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Davis.
Yes.
Smedley.
Yes.
Schroeder.
Yes.
Plag.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Five Is and zero Ns.
Motion carries. Recommendation, consideration, and action upon the Guthrie High School Course Description Handbook for 2021, 2022.
Some pages 315 through 363 of your board packet. Chris, you want to speak to the changes that are in there?
Yeah, basically, we're adding, three courses, we're adding a food production class in the act department, and that was on Mr. Drake's recommendation. And we're also adding a robotics class for our JR OTC students, and the government's going to provide funding for those robotics mechanisms that are pretty expensive. So that's going to be real beneficial, negative, will help our recruiting efforts in that program. And then for one other one.
It's a pre-AP somewhere.
Yeah, and we're going to add, in the past, we've had honors geometry for our students that took Algebra I as eighth graders. And so that those students can receive a weighted credit, we're going to offer that as a pre-AP class now. And for that is the instructor has to be certified and go through training, and so it will actually be recognized as a pre-AP course for freshmen, so that they'll get a weighted credit on the transfer.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Guthrie High School Course Description Handbook for 2021, 2022.
Second.
Motion's made by Smedley and seconded by Schroeder to approve 9H. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Davis.
Yes.
Smedley.
Yes.
Schroeder.
Yes.
Plag.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Five Is and zero Ns.
Motion carries. Recommendation, consideration, and action upon a memorandum of understanding between Meridian Technology Center and the Guthrie Public Schools for supplemental funding for Guthrie Middle School Gateway to Technology Programs for eighth grade students for 2021, 2022.
This program has been very beneficial to our students. The funding that comes from Meridian is an amount of $50,000 to help us support that program. And we're happy to continue that program and feel very fortunate, even in times of dire budget needs, we were still able to continue that program thanks to the support from Meridian. And we bring this to you annually for your approval, and we would recommend that tonight.
Madam President, I move that we approve the memorandum of understanding between Meridian Technology Center and Guthrie Public Schools for supplemental funding for Guthrie Middle School Gateway to Technology Programs for eighth grade students for 2021, 2022. Second.
Motion has been made by Schroeder and seconded by Plag to approve 9I. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Davis.
Yes.
Smedley.
Yes.
Schroeder.
Yes.
Plag.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Five Is and zero Ns.
Motion carries. Recommendation, consideration, and action upon a loan agreement with the Child Nutrition Fund for 2021, 2022.
This is an annual item that we bring to the board, and we get the approval in advance in case it is needed. Looks like, based on how the federal regulations are going to shape out for next year, I don't believe that it will be needed, but just in case, we go ahead and ask for that approval as we begin the new fiscal year.
Madam President, I move that we approve the loan agreement with the Child Nutrition Fund for 2021, 2022.
Second.
Motion's made by Plag and seconded by Davis to approve 9J. Discussion, please? Roll call.
Davis.
Yes.
Smedley.
Yes.
Schroeder.
Yes.
Plag.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Five Is and zero Ns.
Motion carries. Recommendation, consideration, and action upon agreement with Imperial Vending for snack vending for 2021, 2022.
This is our annual renewal of our contract with Imperial for vending machines inside the buildings, and Ms. Chapel is glad to offer any information needed by the board. Recommend approval.
Madam President, I'll make a motion that we approve the agreement with Imperial Vending for snack vending for 2021, 2022.
Second.
Motion's made by Schroeder and seconded by Davis to approve 9K. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Davis.
Yes.
Smedley.
Yes.
Schroeder.
Yes.
Plag.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Five Is and zero Ns.
Motion carries. Recommendation, consideration, and action upon agreement with Renaissance Learning Incorporated.
Pages 370, 374 of your board packet are, contain this agreement and explanation from Ms. Walters. This is, I believe, the second year that we've had a relationship with, for the STAR 360 testing for pre-K through fourth graders, and we want to continue the use of this diagnostic. One of them, regardless of, we're required to have at least one for those students, and recommend that we continue with STAR 360. Ms. Walters can answer any questions that you might have.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the agreement with Renaissance Learning, Inc.
Second.
Motion's made by Smedley and seconded by Davis to approve 9L. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Davis.
Yes.
Smedley.
Yes.
Schroeder.
Yes.
Plag.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Five Is and zero Ns.
Motion carries. Recommendation, consideration, and action upon renewal agreement with Northwest Evaluation Association.
This is on pages 375 and 376 of your board packet. MAP, we've used MAP for a number of years across the district, and we have pared that down somewhat in recent years, as we talked about the STAR 360 with pre-K through fourth grade. We want to continue the MAP with grades five and six, and would recommend approval. And again, Ms. Walters would be happy to answer any questions.
Madam President, I move that we approve the agreement with Northwest Evaluation Association.
Second.
Motion's made by Plag and seconded by Smedley to approve 9M. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Davis.
Yes.
Smedley.
Yes.
Schroeder.
Yes.
Plag.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Five Is and zero Ns.
Motion carries. Recommendation, consideration, and action upon agreement with Follett School Solutions Incorporated for library inventory software for 2021, 2022.
It's an annual renewal of our software that catalogs our books, tracks our due dates, and overall runs the libraries that we have across the district, and would recommend approval.
I move that we approve the agreement with Follett School Solutions for library inventory software for 2021, 2022.
Second.
Motion's made by Schroeder and seconded by Davis to approve 9N. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Davis.
Yes.
Smedley.
Yes.
Schroeder.
Yes.
Plag.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Five Is and zero Ns.
Motion carries. Recommendation, consideration, and action upon School Bus Driver's Handbook for 2021, 2022.
Pages 379 through 388 of your packet are the handbook for school bus riders' regulations and guidelines. And Mr. Thompson is here to answer any questions that you might have, and changes are minimal in here, just like most of the other handbooks, and would recommend approval.
I make a motion that we approve the School Bus Driver's Handbook for 2021, 2022.
Second.
Motion's made by Davis and seconded by Schroeder to approve 9O. Discussion? Roll call.
Davis.
Yes.
Smedley.
Yes.
Schroeder.
Yes.
Plag.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Five Is and zero Ns.
Motion carries. Recommendation, consideration, and action upon the School Bus Driver's and Monitor's Handbook for 2021, 2022.
Pages 389, 3412 of your board packet are the Employee Policy and Procedure Handbook for Transportation. And again, Mr. Thompson is here to answer any questions. Changes are minimal and, in fact, virtually nonexistent if I remember right on this. Would recommend approval.
I have a question. Does each bus have a monitor?
No. Does each bus have a monitor?
Just some buses?
Special education.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. I make a motion that we approve the School Bus Driver's and Monitor's Handbook for 2021, 2021, 2022.
Second.
Motion's made by Davis and seconded by Plag to approve 9P. Discussion? Roll call.
Davis.
Yes.
Smedley.
Yes.
Schroeder.
Yes.
Plag.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Five Is and zero Ns.
Motion carries. Discussion, motion, and possible action to accept a cash donation of $80,000 towards the cost of a new school, excuse me, scoreboard and sound system for Jelzma Stadium.
This F&amp;M Bank has agreed to donate $80,000 toward the new scoreboard and new sound system to be placed at Jelzma Stadium. Just a reminder that this, the cost is just a little bit over that. When the final cost came in, about $83,000, we're going to make up the difference in the building fund. And then we're also, out of the building fund, we are going to put a new scoreboard at the softball field. And so this, we believe that we can get both of these done. Again, these are items that are potentially, could be delayed due to supply line issues, but we're confident, we're optimistic that we can get these things in before the season starts. So would recommend, and with board policy on something that is affixed to our property and is required that the board approve that and approve the acceptance, and so I would it is required that the board approve that and approve the acceptance, and so I would recommend that they do so.
Madam President, I move that we accept a cash donation of $80,000 for the cost of a new scoreboard and sound system for Jelsma Stadium.
Second. Motion has been made by Plag and seconded by Davis to approve 9Q. Discussion? Roll call, please.
As I say, the only thing I was going to say is just a huge thank you to F&amp;M Bank for their continued support of our district, because they're there for us all the time.
Roll call, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
Schroeder?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Five I's and zero N's.
Motion carries. 9R. Discussion, consideration, and possible action to award the contract for Fogerty Elementary Exterior and Fabric Duckcord for the HVAC project.
You have at your seat the tabulation sheet for the bids that were open at 10:00 this morning. We had two bidders. Unfortunately, the low bid, I have to recommend that we reject it. In their packet, the bidder did not complete the required information that was clearly spelled out, that was necessary for, to be considered, and that included a company questionnaire, a W-9 form, a reference list of five vendors, a copy of the vendor license, and a certificate of insurance. Those were not in with their bid. The gentleman was there, was here, and he knew he had made a mistake, and I explained to him then that we cannot accept that. The other bidder, Innovative Mechanical, did have those in place, and so we have, essentially, we have no option other than to accept Innovatives or reject all bids. And I would recommend that we accept Innovative Mechanical's bid. They've done a lot of workforce, and continue to do a lot of workforce, and I'm, I have no concern about whether or not they can perform the work.
What was the projected cost we kind of had for that?
It was around 55, I think, wasn't it? Cody or?
Fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven. Okay, so he's right on. What was the, no, what was the project, what was the budget figure?
It was about 55 in that ballpark.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
So that would be my recommendation.
Madam President, I make a motion that we accept the bid from Innovative Mechanical for the HVAC project at Fogerty Elementary Exterior and Fabric Duckcord.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded, motion made by Smedley and seconded by Schroeder to approve 9R to Innovative Mechanical. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
Schroeder?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Five I's and zero N's.
Motion carries. Discussion, consideration, and possible action upon agreement with Infinite Campus, Inc. for student information systems for 2021-2022.
And this is, while the, while the agreement is for '21-'22, this is essentially in, to switch over, over the course of this next school year, our student information system from Wind Gauge to Infinite Campus, and that would, then that would go live for the '22- '23 school year. Now, let me, we, I know we talked about this in committees. This will be a drawn-out process. I've seen, we've, I've been a part of these before, where you take a huge amount of data and you migrate it from one program to another. But what I would say to, to our staff, our parents, our community, is that in the end, this is a much, it's a far superior product that would, that gives us more flexibility and more things that we can do with it, and also is not, it's much more user-intuitive than for online enrollment and parental interaction. And, and I think that is something that we, we need to be able to leverage the technology that we have with our parents to better communicate with them and make it easier for them to be engaged in their child's learning and follow their child's progress. And so that's why, and I have some experience with other programs, including Infinite Campus and some, and some others, talking with superintendents. They are very pleased with, that are using Infinite Campus, are very pleased with it. I know that Dee has talked with a lot of tech directors about it. We had our, we brought in select key administrators and staff who had an hour and a half presentation on this program, and feel very confident about it. And then one thing that I would mention at your table is an addendum that was not included in your original packet for the agreement with Infinite Campus. And that, that addendum is something that our attorneys recommend, and they, Infinite Campus was glad to provide it, and it stipulates that if there were to be any litigation, it would be in Oklahoma and in Logan County. And so, and I, I guess, obviously Dee's here, Chris and Todd were a part of the, or Chris was at least a part of the presentation. I know Angie was in on that, Carmen was as well. And so if you have any questions or discussion, or anybody wants to speak about the, the need for change, you know, and the challenges that we face with our current student information system platform, I'd be glad to, to offer that up as well, or let any of staff.
I think it'd be great, very well we have the enrollment, you know, have all their grades, that'd be all-inclusive. Now, like, software updates, will those be included in all annual fees? I know those would be very pricey.
Yeah, that's, that's all included in the, in the program.
One of the things that, and I think I shared this with the board members in committee meetings, but I wanted to mention again, I was, I was working in the Stillwater District when they migrated to Infinite Campus, and that's been a long time ago, anyway. And I was very impressed when I saw the presentation of how much they have enhanced the program since Stillwater had switched over. And I, I reached out to the principal of Stillwater High School, obviously an old friend, but also to the director of IT for Stillwater, who coincidentally is a Guthrie High School graduate, and he was very, very much in favor of, of Infinite Campus over your competitors, and feels like the decision they made several years ago was still the right decision, and gave them a strong vote of confidence.
Madam President, I'll make a motion that we approve the agreement with Infinite Campus for student information system for 2021-2022.
Second. A motion is to be made by Schroeder and seconded by Smedley to approve 9S. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
Schroeder?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Five I's and zero N's.
Okay, John, we had to go through the whole alphabet almost before we got to you. Receive bids for the purchase of $1,200,000 general obligation building bonds, Series 2021, for the district, and to vote to award said bonds to the lowest bidder complying with the notice of sale and instructions to bidders.
I'll bet there's not a board meeting you've been to where we went through as many things that, as swiftly as we did there, though.
No comment.
That's what committee meetings are for.
Hey, there's a V through Z that you didn't beat.
I know, it's a Z, but.
Great. Had a bond sell this morning for your general obligation bonds, Series 2021, the million two, that you guys approved to put out for a competitive bid. We received four bids from different underwriters/banks. Very good time to sell bonds to borrow money, and that translated into what you received. You actually, like I said, had four bidders, and your lowest bidder, this is a million two, just a short two-year term, one bullet of maturity. The low bid was from First Bankers Bank Securities in association with F&amp;M Bank. Did everyone get the tab? I didn't. I have extras in case anyone did not receive that or doesn't have in front of them. They did in association with F&amp;M Bank. Basically, F&amp;M Bank, I needed to use a broker-dealer that is registered through DTC, which is kind of the electronic way you do bonds for the last 40 years, and so they used that broker to bid on your bonds, and they were the low bid, I think, for the third time in a row. But their bid was a 0.336732%. So, very happy from our end. Rates are still at that low area, bordering the lowest ever, and certainly we recommend, be glad to answer any questions that you have, but I think this is a no-brainer, but we recommend that he award to First Bankers Bank Securities, Inc., in association with F&amp;M Bank.
I think it's, speaks volumes of their, of F&amp;M Bank's support for the district. This is the second agenda item tonight where they have stepped up, and I'm really appreciative of their efforts and their aggressive bidding on this. I just wish we had more money on the table.
But today, it's, it's hopefully the same market when you go out next year, when those are to 10 million, so.
Yeah. That would be my recommendation as well, is that we follow, award that to F&amp;M Bank and First Bankers Bank Securities, Incorporated.
Madam President, I move that we approve item U and award it to F&amp;M Bank.
Item T.
Item T.
Item U.
T.
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 T, I'm sorry.
You're trying wrong.
Yeah.
We appreciate that.
We're freezing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Motion has been made by Plag and seconded by Schroeder to approve Agenda Item 9T to First Bankers Bank Securities, Incorporated, in association with F&amp;M Bank. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
Schroeder?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Five I's and zero N's.
Motion carries. 9U. Consideration and vote on a resolution providing for the issuance of general obligation bonds in the sum of 1.2 million by independent school district number one, Logan County, Oklahoma, authorized an election called and held for such purpose, prescribing forms for bonds, designating bonds as general obligation building bonds, Series 2021, providing for the registration thereof, establishing the school district's reasonable expectation with respect to issuance of tax-exempt obligations in the calendar year of 2021, and designated bonds as qualified tax-exempt obligations, approving the form of the continuing disclosure certificate, providing for the levy of an annual tax for the payment of principal and interest of the same, and fixing other details of issue.
Certainly, be glad to answer any questions, I think, part of that long-winded agenda item, but it addresses basically the legal requirements under local state law, and also requirements associated with the Securities Exchange Commission, and also with the Internal Revenue Service. So, that's kind of a catch-all resolution directing us to proceed and providing all the information to those individual relevant federal or state agencies. And we're looking to close this on August 24th. That's when you'll have the proceeds, so we'll, after some documents are executed, we'll supply the transcript to the State Attorney General, they'll review, and then we'll be ready to close on that date. So, be glad to answer any questions that anyone asks.
Madam President, I make a motion that we approve Agenda Item 9U.
I'll second that. A motion's been made, and seconded, made by Smedley and seconded by Davis to approve 9U. Discussion? Roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
Schroeder?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Five I's and zero N's.
Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thanks, John.
Proposed executive session for the purpose of discussing employment of personnel, FMLA requests, resignation, separation from employment, and transfer of position requests for all set out on the personnel reports, and teacher negotiations for 2021-2022, disclosure of which information would violate the confidentiality requirements of state and/or federal law all pursuant to 25 Oklahoma statutes, Section 307(b)(1)(2) and 7. Vote to go into executive session is in order.
Some need.
Second. Motion's made by Davis and seconded by Smedley to go into executive session. Roll call, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
Schroeder?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Five I's and zero N's.
We're in executive session. We'll reconvene from executive session, only the items listed in Agenda Item 10. We're discussing executive session. No votes were taken. This will constitute the minutes of the executive session. Vote on action is set out on the personnel reports.
Madam President, I would ask that we amend the personnel report under support staff, under PACE, since in the, there was an error there, instead of amber, that should be Victoria Pace.
Madam President, I'll make a motion to approve the personnel reports with the change mentioned by Dr. Simpson.
Second. A motion was made by Schroeder and seconded by Davis to approve the action set out on the personnel reports. Roll call, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
Schroeder?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Five I's and zero N's.
Recommendation, consideration, and action to approve proposed professional development program to take place on August 21st prior to the start of school year, and to authorize the superintendent and his designees to take all actions necessary to implement the program, including a payment of $750 stipend to those completing the program.
Madam President, I make a motion that we approve the proposed professional development program to take place in August of '21 prior to the start of the school year, and to authorize the superintendent and his designees to take all actions necessary to implement the program, including payment of a $750 stipend to those completing the program.
Second. A motion's been made by Smedley and seconded by Plag to approve Agenda Item 12. Roll call, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
Schroeder?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Five I's and zero N's.
Motion carries. Recommendation, consideration, and action to accept any resignations offered since the posting of the agenda.
We have one, ask these out, board members. Rachel Rudick, Charter vote, recommend acceptance of resignation.
Madam President, I move that we accept the resignation of Rachel Rudick, Charter.
Second. Motion's been made by Plag and seconded by Smedley to approve the resignation of Rachel Rudick. Roll call, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
Schroeder?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Five I's and zero N's.
Motion carries. Discussion and possible action on new business not known about or could not have been reasonably foreseen at the time of the agenda posting.
We have none.
A motion to adjourn is in order.
Madam President, I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Motion was made by Smedley and seconded by Schroeder to adjourn. Roll call, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
Schroeder?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Five I's and zero N's.
Motion carries. Thank you all very much.